This meeting of our Fall Board of Trustees Meeting is now called to order. We have the unusual pleasure of universities to have retired Lieutenant General Keith Huber on our staff, and he's kind enough to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, General. An MTSU tradition, it's only we've only had eight or 10 meetings, but an MTSU tradition is to recognize an outstanding veteran, and floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, board members, President McFree. Sergeant Hueseth, please. Come on up here. Ladies and gentlemen, this is Marine Corps Sergeant Corbett Hueseth. Served in the Marine Corps from January of 2010 to January of 2015. He deployed to Afghanistan in March of 2011 until October of 2011. I served my two years in Afghanistan from July of 2011 to July of 2013. Sergeant Hueseth was with First Battalion, Fifth Marines in the Helmand Province. He engaged in combat operations against a very aggressive enemy. I hesitate at times because people talk about minimal casualties or light contact, light enemy contact, and I submit to you, the only people who foolishly describe combat that way are people who have never experienced it and never had men and women give their lives for each other. First Battalion, Fifth Marines during this timeframe suffered 18 killed in action and over 200 wounded. After his faithful five-year tour in the Marine Corps, he and his wife Bree decided that they would pursue another chapter of life and return to Middle Tennessee. It was his wife in their conversations who said, "Corbett, you need to go to MTSU because they welcome veterans and they support veteran families in transition. They have the precious gifts now of two daughters. Holly this month will be four, and Peyton is two." This young Sergeant E5 of the United States Marine Corps achieved his bachelor's degree here in less than three years, continued with his master's in exercise science, and is currently a doctoral student, working on his, hopefully his PhD here. His point of research is on post-traumatic stress and the relationship between sleep patterns and physical activity. Ladies and gentlemen, Marine Corps Sergeant Corbett Hueseth.
In my time in the Marines, I thought that the most stressful situations outside of battle would be debriefing a lieutenant, or captain, or occasional major, and obviously I was wrong. And I owe that mostly to MTSU as well as the Daniel Center for allowing me to have these sorts of opportunities to come forward and talk about my story as well as the other stories of veterans that I know. Just a brief history of myself. On my third deployment, my wife and I knew that I'd be exiting active-duty military service, and that was what General Huber was alluding to where she told me MTSU was the place to go. That wasn't just by default because we're from Tennessee, it was because MTSU kept popping up on the radar for veteran service-related, "They're going to help you out, they're going to show you the right way." And so it almost became the default for me to go to MTSU because of all of the opportunities that were here. In my bachelor's, I participated in an underwater treadmill study for spinal cord injuries. Dr. Stevens was heading that research, and I realized quickly in my undergraduate degree that research was where I wanted to be. I also realized that the participants we were helping became what I became passionate about. In my master's, I elaborated a little bit further into the veteran-centric research and realized that this is where I need to be. During that time, I transitioned between my master's, my PhD, the suicide rate for my unit was about four times the casualty for the KIA rate. And so I realized that I was in a unique situation where I could affect change not just by actually meeting and seeing my friends, but I could actually implement change through research. So I diverted my attentions to veteran-centric research and PTSD and physical activity, working closely with the VA. And to give a scope of how this research is starting to help, I had my third participant come in today who is as well a Marine Corps Sergeant amputee, the right knee, and he had asked what I was doing and why I was doing it, and I explained it to him, and he kind of nodded his head and understood because this is the place to go as a veteran. This is where you can not just succeed, but excel. So I just wanted to take a moment to say thank you to the Daniel Center, to General Huber, to Dr. Miller, everyone over there, as well as the individuals in this room that make these sorts of instances possible for people like myself. Thank you.
Congratulations, we're free because of people like him. Good afternoon, I'm Steve Smith, I'm the Chairman of your Board of Trustees, and I want to have a warm welcome to everyone here. Thanks for taking the time, all we have is time, and I appreciate you spending it with us this afternoon. I'd like to ask Dr. Mcfee to give us some opening remarks, sir.
No comments, I will save those for my report, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
At this time, Madam Secretary, would you please call a roll?
Yes, sir. Trustee Baker?
Here.
Trustee Boyd?
Here.
Trustee Delay?
Here.
Trustee Freeman?
Here.
Trustee Jacobs?
Here.
Trustee Martin?
Here.
Trustee Kerbowiac?
Here.
Trustee Smith?
Here.
Trustee Wright?
Here.
Trustee Eisenberg?
Here.
We have a call.
Thank you. Next item on our agenda is the election of Board Officers. It's required by statute that we elect a chairman, vice-chairman, and they serve two years, and the floor is now open for nominations for chairman.
I would like to nominate Steve Smith for chairman, please.
Second.
Nomination's been made second, any further nominations? Heidi, do you want to call the roll, or do we, how do we want to do that?
It does not require a roll call vote, but if you want one call, I'd be glad to do that.
If anybody would like to be registered as no, now's a good time to speak up, if not, we'll assume it's unanimous, how about that? Now the floor is open for nominations for Vice Chair. Do I hear a nomination?
Mr. Chair, I nominate Darryl Freeman as Vice Chair.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded, are there other nominations?
Is Peyton the same?
I think we're going to get a raise.
A little double it, Darryl.
What about you, Lon? I should have asked the first time, nomination's now been closed, and all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. I'm not going to give any remarks except to say I'm flattered and appreciative, and we'll continue working hard to try to help more children have a better life. The one goal that all of us have, and having met with department heads across campus, is that unanimously we're here to try to help more children, more students, not children. As a young man we just talked to, he's not a child, but to help more people have a better life, so thanks. Darryl, do you have a comment?
Yep, I appreciate your faith in me as your Vice Chairman. I'm here because of the students, MTSU changed my life, and I hope that the work that we do here will change the lives of other students, particularly those who come from backgrounds that may not have the opportunity to have the American dream. So it's my pleasure to be here, and thanks to MTSU, and thanks to you all for your faith in me.
Thank you. Our next item of business is approval of the minutes. I hope everybody's reviewed those, and if so, I'd like to have a motion or a change, whichever.
Motion to approve.
Motion been made and seconded, all in favor approval of minutes?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Mr. Chairman, who made the second, please?
I'm sorry?
Who made the second to the motion, please?
Pete.
Then who made the motion?
Darryl.
Darryl made the motion, and thank you.
Our next item is the Academic Affairs Student Life and Athletics Committee, our trusted Chairman Pam Wright.
Thank you, Chairman Smith. The Academic Affairs Student Life and Athletics Committee met on September 4, 2019. Our meeting began with approval of the minutes from the May 29, 2019 meeting. The next item before the committee was consideration of a new academic program, a degree program, a Bachelor of Science in Data Science. This program prepares individuals to design and manage the construction of databases and related software programs and applications, including the linking of individual data sets to create complex searchable databases and the use of analytical search tools. The last action item was consideration of revision to Policy 501 Residency Classification. The proposed changes reflect the new PC-80, which requires that universities classify the source or depend, the spouse or dependent child of a service member as an in-state person for tuition purposes if the service member is transferred out of state on military orders. Specific criteria are enumerated, including that the spouse or dependent had been accepted to the university, that he or she was initially classified as in-state prior to the transfer out of state, and that he or she enrolled during the term initially accepted, and that he and she maintains continuous enrollment. So these two action items brought before the committee were approved unanimously. The last item was informational, an update from the Athletics Department. Statistics were provided on student athletes' recent academic success. There was also an update on the 2019 Summer Committee's work on the Policy on Conduct and Risk Management for Athletic Staff, the Statement on Conduct for Athletic Staff, and Student-Athlete Dispute Resolution Process. These proposals have been submitted to the President for consideration. So, Mr. Chairman, trustees, materials for these actions were made available to you prior to the meeting and are in your board notebooks, and that concludes my report.
Is that your motion as well?
I can make a motion as well, yes. I move for the action items recommended by the committee be approved.
A second.
Now's time for discussion. Hearing denied, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
Chairman Smith, I got a question.
Yes, sir.
Eddie, we talked in one of our meetings about finding the first African-American to participate in sports here at MTSU to possibly recognize them at one of our upcoming events, and is there any, you have any data on that or any information on that that you could provide us?
In front of me, I've had discussions with Coach Williams, it really happened with their track program, so there's like, I think, three individuals.
Okay, I just noticed that recently Vanderbilt named a street after the first African-American that attended, that played sports at Vanderbilt, and I think it would be great to have that individual or a group of individuals back on campus to recognize them for being one of the first here at MTSU. Thank you.
Will you make a note on that, please?
Chris, to that point, the two first, I think the two first African-American football players were Low Harold Stevenson and J.W. Harper, and that would have been 19, they would have started school in 1969, and I think they were the first two from what I'm told by Low Harold.
It'd be awesome to have them back on campus and recognize them.
They're both still alive.
Good job there, sir.
You know, good, great people, by the way, great, great individuals, both of them.
We're probably remiss in that we haven't recognized Tom Boyd as our new board member at his first board meeting. Mary and Sam are new board members but attended the last board meeting, so welcome, sir, and you get thrown right into the fire. Would you please give us an compliance report?
Sure. Our committee chairman's absent today, so Dr. Mcfee asked me to pinch-hit, he promised me there would be no hard sliders thrown, though, so I'm taking his word on that. With that, the Audit and Compliance Committee met on August 20, 2019. Our first item on the agenda was approval of the minutes from the committee meeting held on May 29, 2019. The next item was presented by our Chief Audit Executive Brenda Burkhardt, and with that, Tennessee Code Annotated 49-14-102, along with MTSU Board of Directors bylaws and policy on board committees, requires an annual comprehensive report on the internal audit function be submitted for the committee's review. MTSU Policy 70, Internal Audit Section 7, Letter C, requires approval of the coming year's audit plan by the Audit and Compliance Committee. The internal audit plan for fiscal year 2020 was presented to the committee as part of the annual report and was approved. Mrs. Burkhardt presented the first informational item, results of external reviews, and the Tennessee Department of Finance and Administration Office of Criminal Justice Programs conducted an on-site financial monitoring review and a program monitoring review on June 6, 2019 of the Victims of Crime Act, VOCA, funding with a current year maximum liability of Two reports were issued. There were no findings in the financial monitoring review, the program monitoring review contained five findings. Management implemented corrective action, and the respective agency agreed the corrective action adequately addresses the findings and is in compliance. The Office of the Control of the Treasury released an investigative report concerning the Office of International Affairs on July 30, 2019. The report concluded that the former international recruiter misappropriated funds totaling at least $39,750, and submitted other questionable documentation totaling at least $5,010. The matter is referred to the Rutherford County District Attorney for criminal prosecution. Management has taken corrective action by requiring stricter review of international recruiters' travel. The business office requires direct payment of expenses with vendors when possible, and cash advances require justification of the expenses that require cash payments. Next, Mrs. Janaye Stevens, Assistant Vice President for Compliance and Enterprise Risk Management, provided three updates. The first was Compliance and Risk Management Program Effectiveness, DOJ/Department of Justice Measurements and Evaluation. Number two was Healthcare and HIPAA Compliance, University Pharmacy and Other Offices, and then third was, excuse me, European Union General Data Protection Compliance and International Partnerships. The public meeting of the committee adjourned, and the committee went into executive session to discuss risk assessments, audits, and investigations. The committee then reconvened in public session for the final action item, Risk Assessment Reporting Presented by Assistant Vice President Stevens. Section 9-18-104 of the Financial Integrity Act requires institutions of higher education to prepare and provide a management assessment of risk to the State of Tennessee's Commissioner of Finance and Administration and to the Comptole of Treasury by December 31st annually. For 2019, the Divisions of Student Affairs, University Advancement, and Marketing and Communications performed and provided risk assessment reporting. In addition, a risk assessment report was completed detailing university-wide risk and control activities. Similar to MTSU's risk assessment report in 2018, the risk assessment documents are designated as confidential and were discussed in a non-public executive session of the committee. The risk assessment reports were presented to the committee for approval prior to the report's submission to the state as required by law. Mr. Chairman, trustees, I'm pleased to report that all action items before this committee were approved unanimously, and the materials outlining these actions were made available for your review prior to this meeting and are contained in your board notebooks. Mr. Chairman, all trustees, that concludes my report.
Would you, we need a motion to accept.
Motion to accept.
Motion. Motion's been made and seconded, no further discussion. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. Our next report is Executive and Governance Committee, Vice Chair Freeman.
Thank you, Chairman Smith. The Executive and Governance Committee met earlier today, September 18, 2019. The first item on the agenda was approval of the minutes from the March 18, 2019 Executive and Governance Committee meeting. The only other item before the committee was an international item, the Board Self-Evaluation. The MTSU accreditation body, SACs SOC, requires a governing board to define a regularly evaluation, excuse me, board to define and regularly evaluate its responsibilities and expectations. Standard 4.2.G dot, as evidenced by the compliance with that standard, SACs recommends a regular board self-evaluation. Online anonymous evaluation, an online anonymous evaluation was provided to the trustees in January. Materials were made available for review prior to this meeting and are included in the board notebooks. That concludes my report, thank you, sir.
Thank you. Madam Secretary, did everyone respond to the online that was asked to? Just curiosity as to the response rate?
I would have to check to be certain, but I believe there was 100% participation.
Just curiosity if there was not, I don't, you don't know who, but I'd like to know if we have one.
I think it is 100%, if you look at the response, it covers the entire board.
It added up, okay.
Yes.
All right, thank you. Our next is Chairman Joey Jakers.
Thank you, Chairman Smith. The Finance and Personnel Committee met on September 4, 2019. The first item on the agenda was the approval of the minutes from the May 29, 2019 Finance and Personnel Committee meeting. The first informational item before the committee was Budget Development and Compensation Timelines, presented by Vice President for Business and Finance Alan Thomas. The university's annual budget process starts in August of each year for the following fiscal year. It begins with a request from the Tennessee Higher Education Commission of various data elements from each campus in the areas of finance, fiscal facilities, and enrollment. A calendar timeline was included in these materials for typical budget process, and it will be used to develop the fiscal year 2020-21 budget. Budget process and timeline can be affected by outside agencies such as the Tennessee Higher Education Commission, other state governmental agencies, and the state legislature. It should also be noted that the budget process overlaps from one year to another, which requires the university to work on multiple fiscal year budgets at any given time. The next action items before the committee were considered, consideration of revisions to policies. Policy 101, minors participating in university-sponsored programs or programs using university facilities. Additional provisions are being added for clarity as concerns the supervision of minors, Section 4.A.5. Only minors registered as participating in a program are allowed to be present during a program, Section 4.A.12.E. Resident hall doors are not to be propped open, Section 4.A.12.H. An enforcement section is added to provide consequences for violations of the policy, Section 5. Policy 620, Campus Master Plan, the proposed revisions are drafted to change campus facility master plan references to Campus Master Plan to mirror Tennessee Higher Education Commission Policy F4.1 nomenclature. The title of the policy has also been similarly changed to Campus Master Plan. Policy 622, Acquisition and Disposable of Real Property. The proposed revisions change acquisition property title to be in the name of the State of Tennessee rather than the MTSU Board of Trustees. The property acquisition or disposal submittal request was revised to be from the university and not from the State of Tennessee Real Estate Asset Management Division. The submittal request was revised to be from the university and not from Stream, which is Tennessee, which is State of Tennessee Real Estate Asset Management Division. The next item for the committee was a capital projects update. Mr. Bill Waits, Assistant Vice President for Campus Planning, provided updates and timelines on the academic classroom building and the School of Concrete and Construction Management projects. Mr. Joe Whitefield, Assistant Vice President for Facility Services, provided an update on current capital maintenance projects. The last item before the group was the Classified Employee Grievance Annual Report, presented by Ms. Kathy Musselman, Assistant Vice President for Human Resources. In accordance with TCA Annotated 49-8-117, each state university board shall provide an annual report to the Education Committee of the Senate and the Education Committee of the House of Representatives summarizing grievance activities of the previous year. Classified state that are demoted, suspended, or terminated for cause or notified of their rights to appeal the employment action. If the employee starts the grievance process, we are required to report the outcome to the Senate and House Committees. The report provided for fiscal year July 1, 2018 through June 30, 2019 indicated that there were no grievances filed for this time period. All action items before the committee were approved unanimously, and materials outlining the actions were made available for review prior to this meeting are included in the board books. I would like to thank Alan Thomas, Bill Waits, Joe Whitefield, and Kathy Musselman for their many contributions to this committee and to, into the job they do for us. That concludes my report.
Is there a motion to approve the action items approved by the Finance Committee?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Further discussion? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, it fails, I mean passes. See if you're awake, yeah. Safety is paramount of importance of what we do here, and today we'll have a brief presentation on campus safety. Dr. Mcfee or Alan, would you all lead us into that?
Alan, it's his areas of responsibility.
Thank you, Chairman Smith, board members, for this opportunity to bring this topic before the board. It's an informational It's an informational item, something Dr. McPhee and I have talked about for some time. So as campus safety is a very important and top priority for the university. So today you're going to hear from Buddy Peaster, our Chief of Police. I will not steal his thunder and go through his outline of information that he will present, but I think it's a good update on the safety and initiatives that have been implemented on this campus in the last few years. So, thank you.
Thank you all for allowing a few minutes of your time for me to present to you this afternoon. I'll go by my script, and I think there'll also be some slides that you can look at as well as we go through this. I want to start out by letting you know a little bit about the department. We have 45 sworn officer positions with our campus police department. We've got 11 civilian positions, including communications training officers that work in dispatch, clerical and accreditation personnel as well. We employ about 20 to 25 students part-time and dozens of officers from other agencies that work part-time for us. We call them contract officers. We are certified and are fully a police agency, like any other agency in the state of Tennessee. We have arrest powers, but we also provide a service. So with us, it's kind of a balance between service and enforcement, and I feel like our people do an exceptionally good job of bearing both burdens. We are divided into a number of sections. We work patrol, we have investigations, community policing, training, communications. We even have someone that specifically deals with victims as an advocate. We've added that. And our mission statement really is about providing excellent professional law enforcement services to the campus community. I've got 34 years of experience working at campus police departments, and if you don't remember anything else I say today, I'd just like for you to remember that I said that I feel privileged and honored to work with our staff, because I feel like that our staff are some of the best, most conscientious, most capable, and reliable, and hard-working people, men and women in law enforcement, that I've ever been around. So I think that we sometimes fly under the radar, but that can be a good thing. But I just want you to be able to know that the men and women that work here at MTSU in the police department, whether they're civilians, whether they're sworn officers, are really intent on doing the very best job they can for this community. Some of the accomplishments that I want to just briefly touch on. Back in May, our department was accredited by the Commission for Accreditation for Law Enforcement Agencies. It's the most prestigious and the hardest accreditation for law enforcement to achieve, not only in Tennessee but across the nation, and it's really an international group as well, stretching into Mexico and other areas in North America into Canada. We are only the third university in the state of Tennessee that is accredited through Kalia. And so for us, it was a great honor and a privilege. One of the reasons it's so important is it really helps us stay on track, to be up-to-date and doing the things that we really need to be doing. Everyone knows it's not 1994 anymore, but without something to help us make sure our policies, our procedures, the different things that we do are up-to-date, it would be too easy to just lag behind. So our accreditation through Kalia, I think, is not only is it something that we've striven for and accomplished, but it also helps us going forward, I feel. We introduce technological improvements. We have, over the past several years, built out a video security system that uses cameras all across campus. It provides us with actionable information. It provides leads for cases. We've been able to identify all sorts of suspects and even help with things such as hit-and-runs and other sorts of civil matters as well. We are really involved in social media. I think all of you would realize that all sorts of people use social media, but especially the core group of our demographics here at MTSU, being more younger people, they really are involved in social media. So it's one way that we really reach out and inform the people who, particularly the students who are here at MTSU. We have, along with our video surveillance or video security system, we've installed a number, and going forward, we'll continue to install a number of emergency call boxes. These are locations across campus where people can use to directly speak with folks in our dispatch area if they have an issue or need or a problem. We have improved equipment across the number of years, really. We're the first, and at this point, really the only, agency in Rutherford County that has body cameras. And we started our program two years before the Ferguson, Missouri incident that sort of triggered a lot of agencies to look at that. We had a body cam program going before that ever came up, and we've used all of that actionable video to help us in a number of things, not just with complaints, but to help officers see what's going on when they review the video and us to be able to review it. We've also added patrol rifles. We added patrol rifles to our weaponry years ago before it was cool or trendy, if I can use that phrase, in association with being trained and really ready to respond to mass casualty incidents. So we were a step ahead of the game in bringing those to bear on what sort of equipment that we issued to our patrol officers. Ballistic vests. We're one of the first agencies in the county to go with vests that were designed for officers to be able to wear outside their uniform, and you might not really realize how important that is, but I can tell you from being a little older than 25, that the more weight you can get off your belt, number one, is a health benefit, to be able to move it up so that officers can carry weight in a way that they can manage a little better, but also, we can add tools, that I'm going to get to in just a moment, to that because now they have a vest that they can carry things in. So in a number of ways, we have really tried to stay ahead of the curve when it comes to technology and improved equipment. We also have implemented a number of prevention-type equipment. Everyone is aware of the opioid crisis in the U.S. Our officers carry Narcan, and we feel like that's very important, to be prepared if and when we run across those situations. Along with that, our officers also carry EpiPens. We have known of cases where people are allergic or have a seizure or a situation where an EpiPen could save their life. So we have access to those, and we carry those as well. We carry tourniquets. We carry AEDs. Going back a number of years, our officers have saved people's lives time and again through doing CPR. So those AEDs give us that much more advantage if we get called to a medical scene, because many times, we're the first ones there before EMS ever arrives. And so that can be critically important, that our officers are well-trained in first aid, and that they carry the right kind of equipment so that they can make a difference in whether someone lives or dies. We have expanded our programming over the years. Rape Aggression Defense is a program that we sponsor and that we provide to the community. We help... It's specifically designed for women to make sure they're aware and feel like they have some tools at their disposal if they were ever to face an assault or an attack. We have dedicated community policing officers that work throughout housing on campus and elsewhere, doing programming. And, you know, many of you may have heard of our MOU that we were able to work through with a number of officials from the university, working with the city of Murfreesboro to help with some of the violent crimes in surrounding apartment complexes in Murfreesboro. Our officers continually trained. We really focus on all sorts of training. But right now, we're engaged in training all of our officers with all of the Rutherford County deputies, with MPD officers, with EMS and fire and rescue to be trained for active shooter response and management. You know, hopefully, nothing like that will ever happen, but our officers have to be ready to respond appropriately if we were ever called upon to deal with that kind of situation. And as I mentioned before, with first aid and other things, we stay ahead of the curve. We send officers to all sorts of training because we want them to be prepared. I'm a big advocate in the more a person knows, the more they can make the right decisions and do the right things when they're called upon. Within the last three or four years, we've been awarded two grants, one for, as I mentioned before, with victim services, with an advocate for sexual assault victims, and now that advocate has been able to expand her role to deal with any sort of violent crime victim that we might deal with, and also with a domestic violent sexual assault investigator. And that investigator will be able to focus on those instances that we have to investigate that are very difficult, but can work not only to help solve a case, but to work with other departments across campus that deal with victims of these kinds of crimes as well. And then quickly, we've created a crime suppression unit and a drug canine position, a unit, so that we can identify suspicious activity offenders and try to deal with low-level crimes before they take hold and begin to develop. And I think those units will be very, very important in helping us to handle and deal with those kinds of issues. And then lastly, with our accomplishments, we've increased the types of patrols we've been able to do because of some of our partnering with people from other agencies, but with our folks as well. And particularly during fall semester and even in spring semester, we try to be more present and available, particularly in the evening hours, to make sure, as best we can, that MTSU remains a safe environment. And then when it comes to crime statistics, there's a couple of things that we do, without going into too much of the nuts and bolts. There is a federal statute, the Clari Act, that requires colleges and universities to report crime stats, and we do that. We have done that conscientiously now for a decade, where we've really gone into the weeds and made sure we follow the federal law explicitly and completely. And we also, every month, provide statistics to the TBI, which is used every year with their crime reporting for universities and colleges throughout the state of Tennessee. And in general, we have done a really good job, I believe, of being conscientious and dealing with crime activities and making sure that we're reporting the way that we need to report. I think I would just close by saying once again that I am so proud of our people because they are working holidays. They're working when y'all are asleep. They're working on weekends when other people are taking their time off, and I just appreciate the tremendous job and the concerted effort that they put forth every day, 24 hours a day, all throughout the year. There's not a single minute of a year that we don't have someone working, someone who's looking out for the university. And so I think they do an exceptional job, and I'm just very honored and proud to be able to stand before you and report on that. So thank you all very much.
Are there any questions? Sam?
I just had a general question. So you had mentioned you guys are looking at installing more of those call box locations around campus. I'm familiar with the one off of, I think it's Alumni Drive back over there. I was just wondering, where... Is there... How you guys are installing them? Like, are you looking... Is there like a strategic way you're picking where those call boxes are going, or how are you guys looking to do that?
There's a group... It's really a task force that looks at a number of different factors and comes up with a list, and we look at a lot of different things. We look at where crimes have been reported. We try to look at accessibility, where we can put a call box up that someone can utilize, they can have access to it. We have to think about ADA issues. There's also things like funding that really goes into that as well. So we try to look at all those factors, and then as time goes by and we can get those locations identified, once funding comes up, we start installing those. In fact, we have nine locations that we've now pinpointed, and, you know, little by little, we're chipping away and adding to those call box numbers as we go forward.
Awesome.
Sir, I'd like for you to consider adding a student representative of the board to that task force, because they know where the most dangerous places are. I suppose you do too, but they really know.
Sam, you just got a new job.
I do also just want to say thank you for all the work you and your department do. That's a big concern a lot of parents have, and especially, I know even me, coming out here, not knowing anyone having, you know, not knowing anyone within a 100-mile radius, and you guys have made us feel nothing but safe, and I really commend you on all the work and the just proactive and resourcefulness you guys have, so I just wanted to say thank you.
Thank you.
I'd also like to add, there's, as you know, a couple of years ago, there were some issues of violent crime around the campus, and there was this narrative going on about an increase of crime on this campus. So I'd like for you to speak, as we do through the TBI and the Clari Act, keep statistics. Would you speak to that? Have you seen any significant increase in crime on this campus?
Our Clari Act statistics cover a three-year period, so it can be a little difficult over just three years to put together a completely... put-together analysis from just those three years, particularly with some of the numbers that we deal with, because they start out for almost all categories are pretty low anyway. But to answer Dr. McPhee's question, we have seen statistics either stay fairly consistently stable, or they have decreased, you know, a general decrease over time, and I feel like a lot of the things that our people have engaged in have made a real difference with that.
Is that for just the specific campus area, or is that including all of the, like, apartment... like, the general greater Murfreesboro area with, like, student apartments and whatnot?
It's really campus, without going into Clari Act definitions of what is and isn't and all those kinds of things, it mainly is just campus. Those outside apartment complexes that you refer to would be statistics that the city police department would provide.
Does your legal authority, our legal authority, allow you to pursue an active event off-campus, make arrests, and conclude that event? Is that correct?
Yes, sir, that's correct. We could... If we had a warrant on someone anywhere in the state of Tennessee, we could go get them. So that's about as far-reaching as it gets, although we don't typically drive to Memphis and, you know, along the way, do anything, or Knoxville or anyplace else, you know. We try to focus on the campus area, but our authority would allow us, in the right situations, to go off-campus. And we do assist Murfreesboro PD particularly many times when they're doing something close to campus.
Any more?
Thank you for reporting to us.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all. Thank you very much.
Mr. President, before you get to your report, Vice Chairman Freeman has some remarks.
Thank you. As some of you may have read in the paper or seen on the news that Dr. McPhee has been leading some efforts in the Bahamas, and it's been, for me, very rewarding to watch his leadership in action. Today, most of us probably got up and turned our lights on, probably felt the comforts of our air conditioning, probably took a shower and felt the comforts of warm water, probably went to the refrigerator and maybe got a cold drink or made some hot coffee or turned on the news to watch the TV. There's a whole group of people south of here, about 700 miles, who were hit by a hurricane, and they're not experiencing any of the things that we just talked about. However, this young man right here has been providing just a sparkle of hope for some folks south of here, and it's my pleasure to be serving on the board with him and to watch him lead in a very compassionate way, an effort that's changing the lives of some folks in the Bahamas. So if you would, please give him a round of applause for his efforts. So if you would, please give him a round of applause for his efforts. That's it for me, though.
You probably don't want to follow that, but now's your turn.
I think the secretary of reports.
I'm sorry.
Next item says.
Madam Secretary.
Very short. Just wanted to draw your attention, there was just one minor technical change to a policy, 641. It was just correcting or changing a title of a policy within that policy. And then just to inform you that three of the rules that you all approved a while ago have become effective August 15th. Those are the residency classification rule, traffic parking and safety enforcement, and academic misconduct rules. So we now have four rules that are effective. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. President?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. As always, I really do appreciate this opportunity to provide a report to you about some of our activities since our last meeting. And today, I will be particularly brief, since you have seen most of the recent activities and accomplishments in the president's newsletter that we sent out earlier. And I also will save some time for a very exciting and excellent report from one of our academic units. But first, I'd like to give you some good news about our enrollment. We've been giving you pretty much updates over the last several months. I will tell you that today, this will be the largest entering class of new freshmen at our university, 3,259 since 2011. That's an increase of over 413 new incoming freshmen, which is about a 14% increase in our freshman enrollment. Also good news, our new transfer up by 4.2% over last year. And this will be our largest entering class of new undergraduates. So we have categories, first-time freshmen, transfer, and new undergraduates. That is an expanded group. We have a total of 5,393. And last time we enrolled, the highest was a 5,706 in 2011. I also want you to know that as we increase and grow, it is not at the expense of quality. And we have the numbers. The ACT average for the 2019 freshman class is 23.34. And that's surpassing last year's record-setting freshman ACT of 22.87. The average high school GPA for the entering fall of 2019 freshman class is 3.54, again surpassing last year's freshman class average of 3.49. This will be our largest entering class of new transfers, when you put all of the transfers together, 2,048. In 2012, we enrolled a similar number. I find it's quite interesting that Dr. Sells and his staff put together this statistics. Our top feeder institution for transfer students, Mortlow, 1,861 students; Columbia State, 933; Nashville State, 814; Volunteer State, 723; Pilsippi, 264 students. And ladies and gentlemen, the largest, coming from a four-year institution, transferring from a four-year institution, is the University of Tennessee Knoxville.
How many?
That's no, 252. Transfer student enroll, total of 10,474. And that represents 53.82% of our entire student body. So as you can see, transfer students become a very significant part of the growth and vitality of this institution. And all the other institutions are making additional efforts in increasing their transfer. I mentioned to you earlier that THEC came out with its first cohort of statistics of students who participated in the Tennessee Promise, where they went to a community college free. The first statistic cohort shows that the number-one institution in the state of Tennessee for those transferring is MTSU. And that's because we have a group of staff in our recruiting and admissions office that do an exceptional job in that area. Also good news is our largest class, I know the governor has put a lot of emphasis on dual enrollment, working with the high schools. And this will be our largest class of dual enrollment students, 1,221, all through the state. Again, our university college, under Dean Sluter and his staff, and our deans, particularly the dean of basic and applied sciences, and all the others are doing a great job working with the high schools. And it becomes a very good recruiting ground for the top students in the state. Overall, undergraduate population, 19,461, that equals 89.6% of total enrollment. Graduate population is 2,260, that equals 10% of total enrollment. And we have seen a .4% increase in our overall student enrollment. That includes graduate student, undergraduate total enrollment. Now, I know, Trustee Baker, you keep asking this particular question. Until THEC provides an official report, we are uncertain of our sister institutions' enrollment, the LGIs. However, we do have, it was produced, an unofficial data. And it appears that out of all the institutions other than MTSU, the only other institution showing an increase in their enrollment was the University of Memphis, which was less than 1%. All the others on that unofficial showed a decrease across the board. Again, I wish to commend Dr. Sells, VP for Student Affairs, and her staff for an incredible accomplishment. I hope you realize the significance of not only increasing the incoming freshman class in numbers, but also in quality. And that goes very specifically to our strategic goal of recruiting the best and the brightest and those who really fit our institution. And we offer to blazing start for 2020, our true blue tour. We already have had one. And next week, we are going to be, is it in Alabama?
Huntsville, Birmingham.
We'll be in Huntsville, Alabama, and Birmingham. And we have seen over the last couple of years, an increase in our out-of-state student enrollment, quite significant. So Dr. Sells, please pass on to your staff appreciation for their good work. Now, Mr. Chairman, as part of my report today, I have invited the leaders, outstanding faculty of a nationally-recognized Center for Organizational and Human Resource Effectiveness. And it's just apropos that they are making this presentation, because in our earlier meeting, as we were looking at the evaluation of the board, one of the areas that we heard that you all want to get more information is about the academic units and programs and services at this university. And I'll continue to do this throughout our meetings in the future. So Dr. Michael Hein, Director of the Center, along with his colleagues, Dr. Patrick McCarthy and Dr. Rick Moffett, will provide us a brief overview of the center and some highlights of their work. Gentlemen.
Let's get our, get us up here in just a moment, and I'll get us introduced.
Just click it.
Oh, all right. There we go. Thank you, everybody. We appreciate the opportunity to share our MTSU success story with you. I'm Dr. Patrick McCarthy. I am the Program Director for our Master's Program in Industrial Organizational Psychology here at MTSU. And with me is, make sure I got him on the right side, Dr. Michael Hein. He is the Director of CORE, that is, our Center for Organizational and Human Resource Effectiveness. And Dr. Richard Moffett, who's the Associate Director of CORE. And we are here on behalf of all of the faculty of our program who serve as senior consultants for CORE, and they're listed on this slide. A brief introduction, first of all, as to what is industrial organizational psychology, also known as IO psychology. Essentially, it is human resource management integrated with organizational development. It is a rapidly-growing field. In fact, the U.S. Department of Labor identified it as the number-one fastest-growing occupation in the nation right now. And IO psychology is a very applied field. We put quite an emphasis on getting our students' hands-on experience as part of their education. And that approach set the stage for creating CORE in the first place. Oh, sorry.
That's all right. Don't want to steal my thunder here, Mike.
Well, she said she, Kim said she jumbled up our pages.
Oh, that's true. That's true. Just yanking our chain a little bit. Well, one of the things we wanted to talk to you about is today is a little bit about the history of CORE. Our success story really begins on kind of three foundations, if you think about it. Innovative leadership in the administration, commitment to shared goals, and also a team of MTSU faculty, students, and administrators. We realized that we are in our 15th year, 15th anniversary. In 2003, President McPhee made a challenge to the academic units at this university to bring innovative proposals that would help develop nationally-recognized programs. The IO psychology faculty met with President McPhee and actually John Cothran, as some of you may remember him, is the Senior VP for Business and Finance at that time. We shared our vision and also our business plan for a consulting center. Dr. McPhee liked what he saw and heard, and he green-lighted the proposal and the business plan, provided five years of seed funding for us to get off our feet, with the commitment from the IO faculty who are basically running the center, that we would be self-sufficient. And we have lived up to that commitment. The CORE's mission, our center's mission, really centers on the education and training of our IO psychology students. And it's organized and really built around the three pillars of the Academic Master Plan goals: student-centered learning and success, partnership and outreach, and also advancing academic quality. You'll notice that the IO psychology program has actually been around for 50 years. CORE's success in these past number of years has really facilitated and led to our program being the top master's IO psychology program in the United States. Mike?
Well, as was alluded to, we founded CORE about the training of our students. It's an applied field, and we wanted to get them more applied experience and really take our program to be the best in the country. The types of, examples of some types of projects that I work on include developing, recruiting, selection, and promotion systems for law enforcement agencies, doing leadership development and training in a lot of different sectors, doing strategic planning with healthcare executives and with different universities, and organizational-wide surveys for national companies, locals, nonprofits. Students get direct experience in these projects under the supervision of PhDs, and everybody brings these experiences back into the classroom. We do continue to be financially successful. We're self-funding, we pay all of our own expenses. On a typical project, 75% of the money comes back to students. In the past fiscal year, 16 graduate students and 11 undergraduates had paid career-relevant experience through CORE, and that included six 12-month graduate assistantships. And we've also supported student travel to present research at national and international conferences.
So the idea is, maybe, who do we work with? Let's talk about partnerships and outreach. Partnerships are all about bringing the expertise of the university to the MTSU community to help organizations be more successful. This is merely just a partial list of our clients and our partnerships over these past 15 years. We've served an internal resource to a variety of MTSU departments, and I actually look around here today and see a number of folks that we've worked for and worked with. State agencies that we've worked with, Tennessee Board of Regents, Tennessee Highway Patrol, Tennessee Bureau of Investigation, and also the Tennessee Department of Human Resources. We've worked with local and regional agencies such as Rutherford County Government, and also Town of Smyrna Government as well, too. You can see that list, that short list of corporate partners and clients that we've had over the years. These are prominent Tennessee corporations, national corporations, and international corporations as well, too. We've worked with nonprofits and not-for-profits, and also with universities both within Tennessee and in other states. Our reputation as a consulting center that's university-based has actually been recognized both nationally and internationally. We've been invited to panel discussions at international conferences. In addition, our staff has actually been asked to come and consult with other universities about their university-based consulting centers. We always acknowledge the idea that the importance of university leadership has in terms of the success, support in terms of key to success. When that support is not there, or there are other administrative barriers, in our experience in looking at other universities, they have not been successful, and many have actually had to fold. President McPhee has given us sufficient independence and also helped create effective relationships with administrative offices all over campus in order for our center to go ahead and be successful.
So CORE provides a major enhancement of education beyond the classroom through these high-quality professional experiences. CORE's success has had a direct impact on our graduate program, earning its number-one national ranking. Well, let's savor that for a moment, tops in the nation. In addition to paid projects for students, CORE cross-fertilizes opportunities for students with internships, client projects integrated with their graduate courses, as well as generating research opportunities, and of course, community service through the partnerships with these different organizations. 100% of our graduate students are involved in multiple projects, and in fact, for our graduate students, the average number of projects is 12, which is a nice list on your resume when it comes time to move on. For our applicants, it is the top cited reason why they choose to come to MTSU. We attract students from all across the country and internationally from a wide range of countries. For our graduates, all of those experiences add up to typically 100% placement in good career-relevant jobs. And for those who choose to go on to a PhD, getting into top PhD programs and succeeding there. Ultimately, employers seek out our graduates. Student success is, of course, our primary focus, but it's worth noting that a positive side effect to this is it helps us attract and retain top-quality faculty, which certainly helps us sustain this level of excellence over the years, in this case, decades. Student success, of course, is measured a lot of different ways. You've heard some already, but I'll feature two more real quickly. The Society for Human Resource Management has an outstanding graduate student award at the national level. Not only have we had a student win that award, we have had five, which may be unprecedented. On top of that, Purdue University has an HR executive case competition, with the judges being executives from Fortune 500 corporations. When our students chose to enter that a couple of years ago, they walked away as national champions on the very first attempt. I've been featuring mostly the impact on our master's students, but it is worth noting that our undergraduate students also significantly benefit from it. We have an undergraduate major, a bachelor's degree in IO psychology, and they are increasingly becoming involved with CORE and benefiting from it as well.
So we would like to extend our thanks to President McPhee for his continued support. We do want to recognize that we are here on behalf of all of the faculty who worked very hard to make this successful, and the students, they work very hard also. And that's what it's all about, is giving those students a chance to develop. We also need to, we want to extend a thanks to Alan Thomas and his division for the incredible support they give us. And we realize that we have a gem of a contracts department that is easy to work with and really makes things happen for us, and that's make or break for a center like ours. And thank you to the board today for your interest and support.
One.
Yes.
Congratulations on your number-one title.
Thank you.
What is your biggest obstacle in retaining that title here for?
Retirement.
Well, who's to reflect succession? Well, who's to reflect succession plan?
That is, joking about that, that is an issue. Master's programs traditionally have a hard time retaining good faculty, because oftentimes master's programs can be seen as a stepping stone for moving on to a PhD. And this, the Center has certainly been a major asset in that regard, but when the next generation is set to come in, we're going to need to be competitive for bringing in the next level of talent.
Question, when you said 100% placement of your graduates in high-paying jobs, what type of salary ranges are these jobs?
Salary?
Really, pretty broad, anywhere from 40 to 120. If they want to go back to the small town in Alabama that they came from, we can only help them so much. If they want to go do data analytics in Nashville, they can make six figures.
And then, and of course, some of those, after they leave, you know, move up to the C-suite, we have people who have executives at Coca-Cola, Gallo Winery, a whole host of other places as well, too. So, they generally accelerate upward pretty quickly after they've started.
How many undergrad and grad students are there in your program?
So, for the graduate program, we typically have about 30 total. It's a two-year program, two years full-time. So, we bring in about 15 a year approximately. For the undergraduate program, we are hovering right around 100 students. Sometimes it's just over, just under, but that has been growing, and in part because the opportunities are good.
And do you have a feel for your capacity, the number of students with your current staffing?
Yes, that's actually something we're very careful about, including for our graduate program, we are much more concerned about providing a really top-tier experience. So, we're selective. We take, we only bring in a very small percentage of those that apply, because to provide these kinds of hands-on experiences requires you to be able to give each student significant opportunities. And so, for the graduate side of it, it's, we've sort of intentionally, strategically, are careful about the size we bring in. With the undergraduate, that's a, we have a retreat each year that we kind of go over what is our capacity. And so, we're always being careful about that. And the number of faculty is always a key issue that way.
Well, it's a great, well-kept secret. Now, every meeting, I kind of has another great, well-kept secret, and here's another one. So, congratulations. And secondly, I would say, or one other question, do your undergrads get preference to go to your graduate, do MTSU undergrads get preference for your graduate program?
I don't think I would call it preference. In fact, most of our students come to us from someplace else. However, you know, I'll have a student say, you know, if I'm in your class, is that an advantage? And the answer to that is, it depends on how you did in that class. So, yes, we know more about you, and if what we know more about you is impressive, then absolutely, but you have to earn it.
That's a great program. Thank you. Excellent.
Thank you, gentlemen. Trustee Boyd, you're right, we have many, many excellent faculty and programs on this campus, and I'll be bringing a number of them to this board as we meet. Mr. Chairman, I have one final note, just an update on rate of relief. You heard from our Vice Chair, Freeman. I want to say that this is not the first time we've done this. When there was that hurricane in Puerto Rico and St. Thomas, we initiated a rate of relief program and carried supplies to the families of students at MTSU who were living in Puerto Rico. This effort is one that has really provided a challenge for us because of the vastness of the destruction of these hurricanes. I am so pleased of the response. Within three days of the rate of relief, we were over $50,000 in support, financial support. And I think our most recent is 65, approaching 70,000, with over 500 donors. And it goes from the $5 up until, and we said, every penny helps. And, Mr. Chairman, I want to thank you for allowing me to meet with a group of your business partners who helped us to get to that close to $70,000. I really want to publicly thank you for that. We have 51 students from the Bahamas. Seven of those have families that have been affected by this storm. And when we say "impacted," we're talking about losing everything. Vice Chairman Freeman and I have made two trips to the islands with supplies, two planes over 6,000 pounds. We are scheduled to make a third trip tomorrow. We got so many, so much donation and support and facilities that we had to add a third plane. And one of the corporate executives in Nashville volunteered to fly his plane with us to carry, to deliver these supplies through these people that are badly needed. Now, I've said that there's always a silver lining in a crisis or a tragedy. And for me, the silver lining is this, we hear a lot about dissension in our community and conflict. This is a good example of the goodness of people, people who stepped up to the table and provide funds to buy toothbrush, basic, basic necessity. And, Trustee Freeman will tell you, when we deliver, we are delivering this to the people directly. So, there's no bureaucracy or middle. The response ranged from people just breaking down and crying to just unbelief that Tennessee is providing that kind of help for folks who have no home, no food. Thank you for your support. Thank you.
There's quite a connection, though, to the Bahamas, right here at home. In Murfreesboro, MTSU has started a fundraiser to help those who lost everything.
All loaded up and ready to go.
These are, these are generators, 4,000-watt generators. In these boxes, we have, you know, water, food, pampers, diapers.
MTSU Vice Chair of the Board, Darrell Freeman, takes one final look at the supplies being transported to the Bahamas just before takeoff.
For me, it's very rewarding to see those faces and to see them have a sparkle of hope.
A life-changing 11 hours for a crew from MTSU that went in to help in the Bahamas.
We want to give you an update on the relief fund the school launched. School leaders flew two planes to Freeport to deliver more than 3,000 pounds of supplies. President Sidney McPhee says the destruction of his home country was unlike anything he's ever seen.
MTSU has 51 students from the Bahamas, and seven of them are from the islands hit hardest. Kathleen Jacob with our Sinclair Sisters station talked to a brother and sister whose family is struggling in the aftermath.
Flood and air ding now.
Imagine seeing this video of your hometown and feeling absolutely helpless.
It's been really hard.
Tiara Brown and her brother Perez have been watching from afar as Hurricane Dorian wreaked havoc on their island Grand Bahama, right beside Abaco.
I just wanted to be there with my family, be so like, I know if something happened, like, I'll know firsthand. I don't have to wait hours for a call.
At one point, they got that call from their mom.
My mom sent a voicemail. She was like, we have to evacuate, like, panicking. And I started to panic, and she just disappeared for two hours.
Two hours, that felt like a lifetime.
I didn't know what to do, didn't know what to think. Only thing I could do was cry, because at that point, like, you're thinking the worst, but, you know, you're trying to stay uplifted.
Thankfully, their family made it to safety, and their home is still standing. But their lives have been completely uprooted.
Right now, they are trying to get my younger brother off the island, because his school has been destroyed.
Now, they're turning to the community for support, already raising $50,000 for the Bahamas.
What if we can do to help them, again, with their basic needs? We're there to do that.
The hope to rebuild, one day at a time. In Murfreesboro, Brent Ramadona, News 2.
Check this out, just a few minutes ago, MTSU sent us this video. It shows the supplies being unloaded after arriving at the airport in the Bahamas. They're making a big difference here. Today alone, delivering more than 3,000 pounds of goods. Add that to two flights this past weekend, in all, they've delivered 6,000 pounds of rate of relief supplies.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I think we're all indebted to President and Vice Chairman for taking the, taking the front row on this and trying to change more lives. So, there's no way to follow that. I'd like to thank everybody that put this meeting on, and appreciate your confidence and Darrell and I coming back in your leadership. I'll be in touch with every board member on committee assignments before our next meeting. And if you have any questions, my phone is wide open. So, thank you very much. Meeting is adjourned.